Testing one, two, three. This will be the May 17th, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting.
Evening, your staff.
The track is too late.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting in the City Council of Satellite Beach, May 17th, 2017, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilwoman Gibson for a moment of silence and the pledge.
I believe this is due to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no beginning, end, or end.
Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item Three. I have a proclamation to read for Emergency Medical Services Week. Chief, your staff. You want, once you bring them all up. Okay, what I'm going to read is an official proclamation of the City of Satellite Beach concerning Emergency Medical Services Week. So before I start, a couple of months ago, I asked Chief, take my cellphone and put a 911 app on. I'm just kind of be interested in what happened. And let me tell you, and I, the amount of calls and service to date for our citizens is really unbelievable. And I really don't think that our city as a whole, the general well out there, really knows what they did. So ever since I got that and I am on that, I've been going through. Just the assist calls for lifts and so forth, this amazing, the sheer number and what they do for the city. So gentlemen, thank you. Amazing job. I want to read this. Whereas emergency medical service services are a vital public service and whereas since 1984, the Satellite Beach Fire Department has provided advanced life support, medical care 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injury. And whereas the Satellite Beach Fire Department also provides community, excuse me, community paramedic service that provides preventive medical care and support to reduce 911 incidents and improve the health of our community. And whereas Satellite Beach Fire Department EMS and paramedics undergo thousands of hours of special training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas the City Council and the community recognize the value and accomplishments of the Satellite Beach Fire Department EMS providers. Now therefore, I threaten Tina, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, for our counties to hereby reclaim May 21st through 27th, 2017 as Emergency Emergency Medical Services Week. Gentlemen, Chief, thank you very much. Great job.
All done.
Yep, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. You too. This time, citizens' comments, non, for non-agenda items, take residents first and then any other individual who would like to speak. Podium's open.
I'm Barbara Montanaro, a 30-plus-year resident of the City of Satellite Beach, and I was a 23-year city employee. I'd like to talk with you tonight about proactive versus reactive code enforcement and staffing for the building department. I hope to speak with each of you individually, but the Sunshine Law doesn't allow me to talk with you. And I would have liked to have a conversation, a dialogue back and forth, and procedures for public comment don't allow for that either. I understand why. It's unfortunate because I think dialogue back and forth is how you reach good solutions to sticky problems. So I'm going to talk and you're, I hope, going to listen. I had a two-hour conversation today with the city manager and the building official. I believe we entered that meeting in pretty much polar opposite opinions of what's good for the city. We talked, we listened, we argued a little, but we left that meeting with an idea of how we might step forward for a proactive solution to a sticky problem. So conversation works. A compromise is good. So my statements are reactive code enforcement is inconsistent, confusing, and unfair. One resident gets to do whatever on his property, and someone else gets a visit from the code enforcement officer for the very same situation because somebody called it in, but nobody bothered to stop by the other house. You can't tell by looking at the city what's legal and what isn't. It's too haphazard. Reactive enforcement shifts responsibility for inspections from staff to the private citizen, most of whom don't know they have that job, most of whom don't want that job, some of whom are afraid to do that job, and none of whom are trained to do that job. Comments made at and after the April 24th workshop meeting sent me to the YouTube videos of previous meetings and to the documents that govern our city, basically the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations, which are adopted to implement the comp plan. Both are required by Florida statutes. And I'd like to read a bit from each to you, and I want you to notice in several places in the comprehensive plan that directs that code enforcement shall, not may, but shall be proactive. Comprehensive plan is made up of 10 elements. Future land element is the first, and the goal is to, the city shall promote a pattern of land use that fosters a healthy, attractive physical environment, avoids blighting influences, preserves and enhances a residential atmosphere and natural resources, and provides reasonable public safety and security from hazardous conditions. Now I'll skip on down to element number three, which is the housing element. And Objective One says the city shall provide effective, ongoing, proactive enforcement of the city's land development regulations, the standard housing code, and the standard unsafe building abatement code. Policy 1.1.1 under that element says the city shall continue to inform the residents, the residential property owners, of the important aspects of the codes referenced above. And Objective 1.3, the present residential character shall be maintained and enhanced by the city through housing policies, programs, and regulations in order to foster community pride, prevent blighting influences, and assure compatibility in land use relationships and residential density. Then I'll skip on down to element number nine, which is community appearance, and the goal is a city whose appearance and residential character are enhanced through cooperative efforts of citizens, citizen groups, and a responsive government. Policy 1.4.1, the city's code enforcement staffing shall focus on proactive identification and notification of code violations. Objective 1.4, under that same one, the city, the objective is to reduce the negative impact of blight and obsolescence in the city. The city shall be proactive in its efforts to enforce code requirements. And then just the introduction to the land development regulations, all it is, is a general findings of the chapter. The provisions of Florida's statute, Section 163.3161 and following, require the city to enact a unified land development code which implements the comprehensive plan. Code Enforcement Board was established about, I feel like Pat Utech, it's history time. I understand how old people feel. The Code Enforcement Board was established about 1989, and the city had a part-time code enforcement officer who was dedicated to that job. And that's how code enforcement was staffed until 2011, when there was a downturn in the economy, which reduced property values, which reduced revenue to the city, and we had to make cuts. Two employees had to be let go, and the code enforcement officer was one of them. John Stone, together with his building inspector and administrative assistant, did a youngman's, it's not here, I'm trying to say, did a youngman's job in dealing with all the foreclosed and distressed properties and keeping up city appearance. In a workshop meeting on October 1, 2013, staff sought direction on four issues, proactive versus reactive, anonymous versus non anonymous, property maintenance codes, and enforcement procedures. John and his staff reported actively pursuing banks, contractors, yard maintenance companies, neighbors, et cetera, to keep foreclosed properties from becoming a blight on the city. Staff stated that when they drove down the road for either a building inspection or code inspection, they looked left, they looked right. If they saw a violation, they dealt with it. Additional enforcement was reactive. This meeting was a workshop, so no action was taken. Council did summarize their intent at the end of the meeting. Staff would continue the mix of proactive and reactive enforcement. They would take anonymous complaints. Councilwoman Gott would work with staff and the city attorney to draft enforcement procedures and changes in the code to tighten loopholes which allowed people to play the system by coming in and out of compliance repeatedly. That form of reactive enforcement worked a while, but more and more people saw the lack of enforcement, and they either didn't know there was a code, they forgot there was a code, or they just became sloppy in property maintenance. Since 1989, there has been a line of regression in enforcement staffing. Fewer people, fewer hours, fewer eyes on the road. While many older homes are being bought, renovated, and look beautiful, there are other areas where maintenance is beginning to decline. This is not because staff is not working hard, it's because the building and zoning department needs more man-hours. I am proposing and requesting that council consider increasing staffing in the building department by approving and funding a part-time code enforcement officer. The initial responsibility of this person would be to proactively observe violations and provide proactive education, followed by consistent enforcement in a courteous and professional manner. Soft gloves, no hammers. This will reduce the number of neighbor versus neighbor incidents, and it will promote and protect the quality of life in the city. The most important thing it will do is bring the city into compliance with its own comprehensive plan. This is not a complaint about staff. Our staff is dedicated and passionate about our city, just as all of you are, just as I am. They are busy with new construction and renovations. Yee-haw, good news. They do their jobs very well now. With an additional 20 hours per week, they can do an even better job, an outstanding job. I respectfully request that staff and council remedy the staffing shortages in the building department before changing any codes. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Barbara, very much. I believe Courtney and I have talked, and you're working on this for a so-called workshop with citizens, but council will not be at it. It'll be a workshop so they can talk these issues out.
We're trying to get some, you know, pick some people that have spoken on the issue and get them in a room with staff and try to see if we can massage some of the issues together.
Great.
Because it's the hard, you all can't do that, so we'll try to get that done.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Barbara. Appreciate it. Floor's still open for public comment, non-agenda items.
Hey, folks. Matt White, live off of Island Drive. And so, yeah, the, I have to agree with, just on a philosophical level, of being proactive versus reactive. And something as important as code enforcement and following rules, it seems as though, it seems as though being proactive as it relates to how a community can look is going to be a pretty important priority for our town. I had an opportunity to review the YouTube video of the meeting, the code enforcement workshop, and I was real surprised to see just the barometer that was in the room was indicating that there is potentially a need for a change. And some of the things that I would challenge the city to do is to get a real good idea as to how many people are affected by the way that the current code is written and are unable to take advantage of storage, things of that nature, based on the way that the current code is written, and figure out whether or not a caveat or a carve-out is being made for a rather minority number of people as it relates to the community, because this will affect the community as a whole. And, you know, there's a, there's an idea that this is a lowering of a bar of sorts. There is a philosophy that, that this is going to create more extreme situations as it relates to code violations. And the extreme nature of a code violation could make things aesthetically look a lot worse in this town. And I did hear the message that aesthetics is something that the city isn't much interested in necessarily governing, but I also heard that the welfare of the community was something that was capable of creating a priority in code enforcement. And if you consider the degree to which someone's financial portfolio relies on their home, and then you incorporate something that could detrimentally affect the value of that home, I think that you are really creating a situation of diminishing the welfare of the community if you're diminishing the value of homes. And not, not paying attention to how homes look, what might be in front of homes, is certainly something that can affect values negatively of homes and properties. You know, one of the, one of the comments about this proactive versus reactive, I'm the father of two boys, and they're 13 and 10, and we have a code ordinance in our home of lifting the seat up when you go to the bathroom. Well, the approach to enforcing this can be with a hammer, or their approach can be with patience and grace. And I have a feeling that a lot of what we're talking about as it relates to this code enforcement has to do with maybe a bit of a tyrant approach. And I challenge the city to consider creative ways of creating more of a relational approach to code enforcement. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Floor is still open for public comment. Here, I closed citizens' comment portion. City Council comments.
Other than the program I went to for the Odyssey Sea Park last night, which was excellent, it's amazing to know that not only did they win county, but they won the state of Florida, and they're going to the Worlds. They did their little skit. It was amazing, the time and the effort that they put in there. It was hard to believe that they were able to do what they do, but again, it was, it was really amazing, and I know they appreciated the city being there and representing us. So that went really well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mark. Yes. Thank you.
Just attended the Melbourne Chamber of Commerce Women of Excellence meeting yesterday morning, was it yesterday? Gosh, it's been a long couple of days. It was a pretty interesting meeting. It was at Bear Furniture. And the cool thing that happened was Sheriff Wayne Ivey came up and talked about active shooter situations and how, with the change and the shift in the way that the world is today, how they approach active shooter situations differently. I won't go into too many details, but it was definitely something to look at. You know, the initial is to run, hide, and then attack, and they're kind of taking a different approach and saying that maybe sometimes an attack is something that you should do ahead of time. And he went through all these different defense items that you could have, because not everyone's comfortable with guns, which is completely understandable. And he mentioned, he showed some tasers, and I thought it was pretty funny because there was a taser that had some, kind of a jagged edge, and he told us the story about how he was showing about how this could also be used as a defense weapon, and he tased himself in a meeting where he was talking to people. I thought that was pretty hilarious. But also shows that tasers can be dangerous as well. But other than that, that's all we did. It was a pretty good, we have some pretty great business leaders in this area, and met some really cool people, and hope we continue that relationship with them.
Thank you.
Well, we've had two town hall meetings so far, one on the 4th, one on the 11th. And Mindy was there, and Steve was there, and Hart was there. So they, they were, they were part of it. Great meetings. And one in Montecito was the first one we did, and that one always has a good outpouring of people from that community, and we got good comments from them, so it's, it's always great. On the 8th, I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting, and Colonel Danny McKnight from Black Hawk Down was the featured speaker that evening. And if you don't know who he is, watch the movie. He's in the movie, not actually, but it's based on his, his mission in Mogadishu, Somalia. He's also the brother of the city manager, Jim McKnight, who's now on Cocoa Beach, but was with Rockwood for 26 years. So Danny grew up here in Brevard County and moved back. Let's see, on the 13th, I was at Pelican Beach Park. Ethan and his mom, Kathy, do the Keeper of Our Beautiful cleanup. They're going to be gone the month of July, so they're looking for somebody to fill in and run that program at the beach for them on July 8th. And I'm going to be out of town, or I would probably pitch in and do it. So if anybody's interested, let Courtney know, and Courtney can get in touch with them to let them know. And I attended the police volunteer luncheon today. And Bert, you know, we had a good turnout there. We have great volunteers in our police department, and it was a pleasure to be there for lunch with them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yesterday, I entertained a bunch of Cub Scouts in here. Had a great meeting with them. They all wanted to, they all sat up here, we got their pictures. Most of them wanted to be mayor. I'm sorry, no one really wanted to sit next to their seat, but that's okay. And I also attended the police academy graduation. Again, another great job by police department, and thank you to all the citizens that took the time out to take the class and care enough about the city to do it. So it was a nice evening there. That's all I have to say. Moving on, city manager's report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into the city stuff, I wanted to just recognize for a moment that Gabe Fine is not with us tonight. He is recovering in a rehabilitation center from an incident where he, you know, he's ill and he's recovering. But at the last council meeting, the night, the day, the day of the council meeting, he called our city clerk, Lenore, and said he wasn't going to make it to the meeting, and she could tell by his voice that there was something wrong. And so she called over to the fire department and had our community paramedic, Melanie, go visit him, and they pretty much forced him to go to the hospital, and it was a good thing because he was, he was very ill. But we wanted to recognize that he is not here tonight. We told, he wanted us, we visited him today, and he said he wanted us to save his seat. So he saved his seat, and that's a picture I took of him while we were sitting there. So I, and we're going to email him the clip of the YouTube video, but I wanted to make sure he knows that he's loved, and we all adore him, and I wanted to recognize our staff for recognizing one of our residents that had an issue and a need and making sure that they acted on that. So good job to Lenore and Melanie. On May 27th, the Police Athletic League will hold their mini-bunko night, and this is an adults-only game of dice. The teen zone doors open at 6:00 for dinner, and the dice roll begins at 7:00, and the cost is $15 per person for advance tickets, and you're able to get those tickets at the recreation department. Sea Turtle Preservation Society will begin offering guided sea turtle walks in Satellite Beach in June and July, and reservations are mandatory for this and are accepted after May 1st, and the phone number to call is in my agenda packet. If you're interested in that, just give me a call or come up after the meeting, I'll give you that number. The annual 20-day, 21-day salute is going to begin, or has begun, and Kay and Steve LaRue and their team are posting flyers throughout the city, and they're looking for volunteers to help. So if you're interested in that, please give them a call. They're looking for volunteers to take down and up daily from June 14th through July 4th, starting at 7:30 a.m., and then also again at 5:30 p.m., the flags that you see at City Hall, all around City Hall. You can call 777-5010 for more information. The last day of school is Wednesday, May 24th, so please be mindful that there's now kids everywhere all day long. Also, this weekend is graduation for Satellite High School. My daughter's graduating. And Pelican Beach Park, I can tell you right now, is going to be the site of many graduation parties. So unless you want to get stuck in teen land, I would go to High Tower that weekend. My evaluations have been completed. Thank you very much. I received a score of, average score of 146.2 out of a total possible 150 points. I appreciate your confidence and your comments. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn over briefly, ask Alan to come up and talk to you briefly about the Time Street drainage project and kind of give you an update on that and how much we saved, which is, of course.
Good evening. Wanted to, Courtney's asked me to give you an update on where we are with Time Street. And for the most part, the hard stuff's done. We've got the pipe in the ground, the structure's in the ground, and now we're just working on the restoration. But I wanted to give you a little insight into exactly, if I can find the right button. No? No? There we go. These are some of the pictures of the pipe that we pulled out. Now, if anybody, I'm sure everybody here is familiar with the Sherwood Pond. And I say that humorously, but it was actually a pond. Anytime we had heavy rains, water would back up at that intersection, the Time and Sherwood, and it would back up all the way almost to Cale. And we couldn't figure it out. We couldn't, why is this happening? Because we had the back truck, we've run the back truck through there. But once we started looking into some of the problems that we had along other parts of the pipe, we quickly realized that it was time to do something more drastic than just try to clean it out with the back truck. When we pulled the pipe out of the corner to change out the structures, we found that the 15-inch pipe was moving about six inches of water. The pipe had become, you know, probably half-full of sand and sediment. And then somebody, whether concrete truck or somebody building a pool or something, decided to clean their truck out and dump it into those inlets. If you see this pipe, the pipe on the right there, there is a ledge at this point, oop, wrong way. Hold on, come on. It's not working. I was trying to get to the pointer. Is there a pointer on this?
The middle one, the little asterisk, should be the...
Put your glasses on, Al. Yeah, I don't, I don't... This, this area here is concrete, this concrete ledge. And you can see all the sediment that was underneath that, and you have this area here where that was moving water. So that is probably typical of what a 50-year-old pipe looks like all the way down the line. So from the Glenwood trunk, which is in the back of the home on, at the corner of Glenwood and Time, for 400 feet, we had pipe that was inundated with roots and sediment and sand, and then we, so that is why the water wasn't moving. Now we have, godly. So here's a little bit of what we were doing. We put two new structures in, one at the Glenwood trunk to connect to the Glenwood trunk, and then we moved one out to the road and ran it, ran the pipe, the new 15-inch, 18-inch pipe, I'm sorry, 420 feet to the, to the structures. And prior to that, we had done some other pipe work, probably another 300 feet in various areas to the south of that. Okay, I'm hoping this works. areas to the south of that. Okay, I'm hoping this works. Why is, I'll tell you what, I'm bad at this. And here are some of the pictures of the actual work being done and the pipe going into the ground. Now, when we did Roosevelt and the paving project, we also bid this job out at the same time, and the prices that we, that came in were drastically different than what we thought they were going to be. The lowest bid that we received was $171,318 to date, and this is with $5,000 contingency on the restoration. We completed the project for $53,629, for a savings of almost $118,000. Now, you know, we've used the term kicking the can down the road, and, you know, we looked at this project knowing that it was going to lock us up, and we were going to be tied to this project for, and we were for about a month, you know, a little over a month, because we did run into a couple of conflicts. The weather actually held out for us, but the conflict slowed us down a little bit. The residents were absolutely fantastic, everybody cooperated with us. We made sure that they were able to get in and out of their homes every day, and the one time, I think we closed the street for two days, very short period of time, to get the pipe across the street, but it went really smoothly. Now, I just need you to keep in mind that that $53,000 doesn't include the other sections of pipe that we put in, because we, that's 420, that's for 420 feet of pipe. In total, we put in, when we're done, because we still have to go in front of Larry Whitney's house, so by the time we're done, we're going to put, have put in 750 feet of pipe along Time, brand-new pipe. That cost that was given to us by Massey, that low bid, was just for the 400 feet. So the additional cost that we have into it is probably another $30,000, but would have cost us at least that much, again, another $150,000 to fix that. So we did, I would say, probably a $300,000, $280,000 job for, you know, all total would be about $80,000, so. So I'm pretty proud of my guys, they worked hard and did a good job, and we're proud of the way that we could save the city some money and solve a big issue, because it has been a thorn in the side, in my side for a long time.
And it's not just money savings, too. When we have a contractor, like, you know, any of those that would have responded, we, they don't have the, not to say they don't care, but they don't have the pride in the community like Public Works does, so I'd never get complaints, in fact, I get compliments, the whole street's torn up, and I'm trying to get through, because I like to pass it and see what they're doing, and the residents will stop and say, "Oh, they're just so wonderful," you know, and nobody does that when Massey or V.A. paving or, you know, somebody else is doing that, it's always when Public Works is out there, because they know them and they trust them, and Public Works goes above and beyond to make their, you know, their situation more comfortable and work around their schedules and things like that, so they did a great job.
I got some emails from a couple of homeowners there, and they were happy with the guys as candidates.
Yeah, one fellow, I think the letter is in the packet, wrote, and says, "I'm very upset," and I was like, wow, because I don't have anything to yell about, you know, so.
So, on that project, is that, we talked in your office the other day, is that a pretty good indication of Glenwood and some of the other ones we were going to find?
I think when you're dealing with 50-year-old pipes that are now outsized, because when the pipes were built, when these drainage systems were put in, there weren't very many houses there, so they, a lot of the water that is now going into these systems was perking into the ground. Now, it's traveling down the street into these pipe systems that, you know, we didn't have a back truck until 2000, I want to say 2011, so prior to that, we didn't get in there and clean those pipes as we're doing now, you know, we don't have the, we didn't have the maintenance program that we have now. Since 2000, we've been replacing a lot of our systems and finding this type of situation, but, you know, it's an expensive endeavor. And in the case of the Glenwood trunk, we know that that trunk line runs between two, in people's backyards, and it's not accessible. So, and we know that there are trees and roots, and, you know, those roots get into the pipe and they catch debris, and I have a Spider-Man doll that's about this big in my office and a football that we pulled out of the pipe on Lemon Street, and that was causing a real big problem for the folks on Norwood Court. Well, once Spider-Man was taken out of there and the football was taken out of there, everything flowed well, you know, but those are the problems that we have, especially for pipes in people's backyards that we can't get to, that are not accessible.
Alan, when we look at slip lining the Glenwood trunk, do they put a camera in there first?
Absolutely.
How are we anticipating these same scenarios along that, with all that being slip lined? And how do we address, if we know there's a spot, do we dig it up, fix it, and then continue slipping, or?
Well, the beauty of slip lining is what they do, and they're able to go in, even in 30-inch pipe, which is what the Glenwood trunk is mainly comprised of, they can go into those systems, and first of all, they have to dry it up, and that'll be the challenge for that area, because you have to move the water to another area so that they can, so they'll have to plug the pipes and move the water to someplace else. And it's beyond me that we have as much water as we do in those pipes, so we know that we're getting groundwater infiltration in a concrete pipe, so we know the seams are opened up. So they go in, they plug up the pipes, they'll take, dry it up, get a camera, go in there and see where the root problems are. Then they'll clean it out, go in there and deroot it, and that's when they go in and slip line. Much like they did with the sewer systems that they just did, the sewer pipes, they had the same type of issues with water infiltration, that's why a lot of these lift stations were inundated when it came to not even just mildrains, they were inundated with water because they had so many leaks. So now, they've slip lined a good deal of them, so they don't have that issue as much.
Any other questions on this item?
I just want to, I got more comments, because I live right around the corner, so my neighbors were all very positive what was going on, and I'm kind of like you, I was going down that street every day, and your guys did a tremendous job, thank you.
Yeah, like I said, there's still a little bit of work to do to, you know, get it repaid, put the curving in and all that, but I think everybody will be happy once it's completed. But the biggest thing for me is, I want to say goodbye to Lake Sherwood. Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Alan, very much, and thank your staff for all the hard work and the people.
And on another note of thank yous to the Public Works Department, we have attached a picture of a thank you in the form of signed baseballs that were received by Public Works from an out-of-state baseball teams who participated, or who appreciated the way the Public Works crew maintained the fields. We have teams from Michigan and Canada who come down each spring and rent our fields.
Nice.
We also received a thank you letter from Andrea Bowden, American Cancer Society Community Manager, for our support of the South Beaches Relay for Life event. And the city has once again, it's like every year, you know, received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2016, and we did attach that award, so hats off to Suzanne Sherman and Jennifer Howland. And on a sad note, Jennifer is leaving us to move to Ohio, so we are trying to find another comptroller right now, and it's going to be a huge loss to the city, she's done a great job for us, but we wish her the best, so it's bittersweet. I have three action items, I'm sorry, I have one on here, but I have two to add.
Do we have both of them?
I'm going to explain the last one, yeah, I'll explain the last one. The first one is Pet Safe Bark for Your Community Grant is a program committed to creating safe, off-leash areas for pets and their owners, and the program helps to fund new pet parks as well as maintenance and update to existing parks. The program will award a total of $275,000 to 25 communities, and just going down to what applies to us, 10 of those will receive $10,000 for maintenance to enhance an existing park, and 10 will receive $5,000 for new park equipment. And in order to qualify for the grant, the city will submit a summary of the funding needs of the dog park, as well as a letter of support and willingness to complete the project if our community has chosen. So staff is requesting the city council's approval for the mayor's signature on the letter of support to be submitted as part of the grant application.
I'll make a motion to approve that letter being sent for the grant.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Questions from council? Since it's an action item, I'll open up for public comment on action item number one. Hearing the back of the council, any further comment?
Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes.
And just to kind of give you an update, we are, we are in discussion with some of the dog park users right now to see kind of what they're asking for, for the, for the dog park, that it is, you know, it's time to look at our facilities and start refreshing them, and we want to look at, you know, possibly modernizing the way we take in registrations and funds and stuff like that, so. The second item I have is that we have a pension board issue right now. Harry Pollock has resigned from both the firefighters and police, and then also the General Employee Pension Plan Board of Trustees, and we are looking to appoint two primary members, one for the police and fire pension plan, and then one primary member of the general employee pension plan, and we kind of need to do that at this meeting, otherwise we're going to run into quorum issues in the future meetings. So we've put in your, in front of you, two applicants that have been indicated that they're willing to serve on this board, so we're hoping that you can do that tonight. And you have interviewed the...
Right, I'm going to make some comments here. We have two individuals, both I think were qualified to be on the boards, and I know we're trying to get more and more people involved in our boards. So I would like to see us use both of the people, I know Harry was on, did both, but we're starting to get younger people to come forward, and I would like to be able to use both of them. So, and I'm not sure, Courtney, you know, I talked that we would want Brian to be on the fire and police, but maybe he could help us out on the general, and then have Dave on the fire, but I would really like to use both of the individuals if we could.
The vacancies that we have is Harry's vacancy, and he was on both boards, so we're looking at appointing one person to general employee and one person to the police and fire.
Yeah, you can, you can do whatever you want, I mean, you have two openings.
The reason why I'm asking this is because I've been made aware that Bill Mayer is going to do the same thing that Harry has done, which is going to put us in another situation, so we're going to be looking at that also. So I just want to make you aware of that.
He has not contacted me or even yet.
Well, I think it probably, it should be you contacting him, because...
The council director, I can do that.
I think that's probably the best thing to do, because of the situation that's going on there, I don't think his wife is fully aware of what needs to be done, so maybe a phone call would be the best way to handle it.
Yeah, that's an issue that's going to come up, so right now, we have two...
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to appoint Ryan Miller to the general employees' pension plan board of trustees to a term ending April 3rd, 2020, and a motion to appoint Dave Ryan to the firefighters' and police pension board trustees, terminating April 3rd, 2020.
Second?
Okay, a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion from council before I open up for public comment?
My end.
At this time, open it up for public comment on action item two.
Bill Spiegelhalter, resident. On these where, like Harry is on both boards, I think there is a reason for that. Like, I'm on both boards, so you better be careful, you know, how you do that. I think there's a requirement that, like Harry is on both boards, and that I'm on...
I believe you're right, and I think when we get to the point where we have to fill Bill's position, we can make that happen at that point in time. And I will tell you this, I went over this with Courtney today, because we were, we already have canceled the May 25th meeting, it's been changed to July, or to June 8th, and the problem we were going to have in the general employees is we were not going to have a quorum, even with adding these people right here. We are going to have to add the next seat at the next council meeting, or we're not going to be able to have a quorum at that meeting. So it needs to get handled.
Yeah, but that's only because I'm going to be on vacation for that, for that meeting.
Thank you. Question to Jim. I've never known that people would have to be on one, have to be on the other, is that a...
I don't recall the ordinance per se, because I don't think I've looked at that ordinance in probably 15 years, but my recollection is, is that it doesn't have to be the same people on both boards.
I just want to make sure, legally, from that standpoint, we do it correctly.
I think historically, that's kind of how it's happened, because like with Harry, he's had it on there forever, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, we...
Okay. Public comment is still open on this agenda item. Lenore, if we could also, your liaisons to those, if we can find out if there's any applicants in the pipeline somewhere, and, you know, if we know individuals in our city that would like to help us, we probably should go out and make that effort, too.
On Bill Mayer's position, it's a ministerial position, so we would have to actually ask for applications to be brought forward, and then they would be interviewed with the pension board, and then they would elect it, and then council would ministerially approve their election results.
So that...
For the police and fire, or the firefighters and police pension plan.
Okay, so that's only on one of them, though, right?
Right, he only, yes, he's only on one.
He's only on that board.
He's only on the police, right, okay. So we really only need to fill one after tonight?
Exactly.
And the one that needs to be filled is the other one that's on the general employees, I think there's a vacancy on, there should be one other vacancy on...
No, it's just Harry Pollock's position, which you're now...
We did, where we're in the process, correct. So there's one opening. Thank you. Again, public comment's still open. Hearing the back of the council, or the council comment?
No, I mean, is there, is there, I know, remember, we had, we were going for a while, we were interviewing an awful lot of applicants that were applying for a lot of stuff that, and we didn't have any of those openings. I don't know if we still have some of those that we might want to reach back and say, "Would you be interested?" Then they could follow the rules.
I'm not a liar of anybody at that time, because there wasn't an opening.
Right.
Had applied for the pension type.
That's my advice.
So I think we just need to do our homework and find that individual that can help us have some background in that. Okay. Any further? Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff. Courtney, you have one more?
Yes, we have, in your previous meeting, you had approved a contract, continuing service contract for Rochelle Lawndale's for the sustainability, you know, following through with sustainability changes to the LDRs, and, and part of that contract is requiring her to have a million-dollar insurance coverage, and normally that would be applicable, particularly if we're asking for a large-scale product of end, such as, you know, a $300,000 or $400,000 plan or something like that. I mean, in this case, it really doesn't apply, but it is very costly for her to hold that insurance for this project, and basically it's outweighing, the cost is outweighing what she would get out of the project, so it's making her reconsider her work here. So we were hoping that you could waive that portion of the contract and let us move forward without having that as an issue.
Let me ask, it's just, on that simple, what in the world would she need insurance for on that type of project, whether she didn't complete it, is that basically what that type of insurance is for?
Professional liability is basically malpractice, I think that's what it is. That's the legal name for malpractice is professional liability, so that, you know, if she was negligent in the performance of her work or something like that, I think a professional liability is about. You wouldn't sue, if she breached her contract, since we're talking about her, if she were to breach her contract by not performing, you would just... to breach her contract by not performing, you would just sue her for whatever that was. If you had to go out and get somebody else to do it, and it costs the city more money than what it would've cost for her to do it, that's what the city damages would be. But the liability, the professional liability just deals with, with malpractice.
Discussion?
So, we'd be rescinding all that liability, Jim, if we waived it off, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I talked to Suzanne about it, and it, this is kind of a unique situation, and I'll just go over some of the stuff that we talked about. One of them was, is that the way this contract is set up, it's essentially piecework, you know, the, the council's just gonna have her go off and do a specific task for a specific amount of money, you know, with a cap on whatever it is that she's gonna do. Um, the, the other issue is, is that she's making recommendations, there's really nothing that, quote, "she's doing per se" without getting input from staff and the boards and the council, because the council's gonna be the body that's ultimately going to be accepting whatever, or, or not accepting whatever she proposes. Um, those are the two main driving forces, I think, as far as dealing with this particular... And the fact, the other, the other issue is she's very cognizant of what the planning requirements of the city are, and it's not like she's gonna be go out and probably suggesting things that are, you know, like putting in a 100-foot building or something like that, you know, it's, she's cognizant of what the history of the city is and that kinda stuff, so, tying all that together, if council wants to waive it, then I can see why, you know, that would happen, and, and as Courtney already said, the issue about cost effectiveness is, the, the cost of the professional liability, it probably outweighed what, she may get in income and the whole thing, too, so...
Thank you. A motion to waive it?
So moved.
Second? Okay, motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion from council? At this time, open up for public comment on this action item, number three. Hearing them back to council, further discussion? Hearing them, Lamar?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passed. Courtney, any further?
Um, I was going to, um, try, I was trying to take some time off next week, since I would like to take off some time next week, I know, I'm trying to do it before the kids get off school. Um, and I'd like to try to do it, um, where, more than three days, even though I'll be in and out of the office, I, to do that, my contract asks for your permission to do that, so, I guess.
I don't know.
As much time as she's taking, time with this already, I mean, that's why, you know, I tried to skip this section.
Make sure it's all right.
Do we have your assurance you'll answer the phone if one of us call you?
Don't I always answer the phone?
I know, but you're asking for time off, I just wanna make sure that, you still answer the phone.
Yeah, I'll probably be here at some point.
Thank you.
I'm okay with that, then.
Sure.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you very much. Any further questions for the city manager? Thank you. Moving on to agenda item seven, discuss, take action on the final version of the Sustainability Act Plan. Nick, are you the support service on this?
Good evening, council. As you know, we've been moving forward the Sustainability Action Plan, and its, uh, final version is now online, and it's been, uh, through the wringer, it's gotten edits from myself, the city manager, FIT, uh, Dr. Linderman, Sacre Eichels, and we even took it out into the public, and it was well-received there, we even had comments from, uh, the public online, since we made available online, and so we're asking today that you accept this final version.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Discussion, motion?
I would like to make a motion to accept the final version of the Sustainability Action Plan.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gibson?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion from council?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, I read the whole plan, and there are things in here that eventually will affect what John Stone's department does as far as code enforcement. So, I'm just throwing that out there, because this is another item that when we talk about proactive enforcement, this item is going to demand proactive enforcement. There are elements in that plan that talk about enforcement, so I'm just putting it out there, and I'm in favor of this plan, I think it's great, but I'm just throwing that out there so that we can understand the dynamics of what our city does and what's required from the different departments, and that's John's department, so I'm making you aware of that.
Further comments? At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item seven. Hearing them back to council? Further? Lamar?
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, thank you, Nick, thank you. Uh, Nick, also, were you staying in billboard the Saturday morning, I don't think anybody had said that, is the ribbon cutting for the community garden?
For the shade house.
Shade house, sorry, guys.
So, we're talking about balance for her.
All right.
I'll mention them again.
Yep, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item eight, take action on application for an Indian River Leaning National Estuary Program Restoration Grant.
Uh, so the NEP National Estuary Program has a grant cycle that's currently open, us as well as many other agencies are currently applying for grants. This grant is to expand on existing infrastructure on the De Soto Park Drainage System, the drainage basin that exists there. In the past, exfiltration pipes have been installed, uh, three ponds were installed by the library, and this aims to, uh, enhance that existing infrastructure by including soils, bioretention soils. And the concept of that is, uh, pretty simple, basically we'll be able to retain more water and absorb more nutrients, Dr. Treffries is going to partner with us to do the monitoring, um, trying to get some more partnerships, so the funding amount that we're requesting you to approve is for the $50,000, $50,000, $50,000 from them, $50,000 from us, for a $100,000 project maximum. I've been working the numbers the past couple of days, I should be able to get it down lower than that, so that we can decrease our required amount of volunteer hours and increase our total potential benefit from the project. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. Council?
Just emphasizing, the match is in kind, just emphasizing that.
Okay, great.
Would that, would that be coming out of stormwater fund, or is it coming out of the...
It's in kind, meaning that it's staff hours.
Oh, okay.
Volunteer hours.
Volunteer hours.
Gotcha. Discussion? Hearing them, open up for public comment on agenda item eight. Hearing them, bring it back, do I have a question?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Any further discussion from council? Hearing them, Lamar?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, Nick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item nine, is please take a look at, and approve the budget calendar for FY 17, 18. The dates are in our packet, July 19th, regular council meeting Thursday, July 27th, for special meeting, August 2nd, regular council meeting, September 6th, regular, and a September 20th, regular council meeting. They fit everybody's schedule at this time?
It's highly possible that I will not be here for the July meeting.
Which one?
The 27th, oh, and the 19th. We take two weeks off in July, so July's just, probably just gonna be a bad month for me.
Okay, we have a quorum?
I don't have any on plan, so...
I'm sorry that that's like, kind of a rock solid schedule.
We have, we have time and then they're...
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that we go through the whole thing together.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure it didn't inhibit...
Since this is, uh, agenda item, any public comment on our dates? Hearing them back to council?
Make a motion to approve the budget calendar for 2017, 2018.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion? Hearing them, Lamar?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff. Moving on to agenda item 10, discuss, take action on ordinance 1139. Jim?
Ordinance number 1139, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the FY 2016, 2017 budget ordinance number 1126, providing an effective date, it's the second reading of ordinance number 1139.
Thank you. Discussion, motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 1139 on the second reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from council? I need to change this to where it did say it on my packet here, sorry. Um, this opened up a public hearing on agenda item 10. At this time, uh, open up for public comment on agenda item 10. Hearing them, back to council? Any further comment, Lamar?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Agenda item 11, ordinance number 1133, uh, will be moved to a future date. Moving on to agenda item 12, which is agenda for the June 7th council meeting, please take a look at it, if there's any other items that you feel you would like to have on it, please check with, uh, our city manager. Moving on to agenda item 13, approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes from the special meeting on April 19th, and the council workshop meeting on April 24th, the council workshop meeting on May